You weren't there.
Alrighty, Commissioners.
Didn't make it.
Welcome. Happy Tuesday and over to you Chair Harrington.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our work session. Oh, my goodness, the middle of the month here of November, November fourteenth. This is Chair Catherine Harrington. I'm joined in the room with Commissioners Treese and Commissioner Willie. And online, we have Commissioner Rogers, who has a cough, and we're grateful for him not sharing his germs with us. And then Commissioner Nefisafai, who has a couple of kiddos homesick from school today. And we do have our CEO Diane Tana Gucci Dennis attending online because we need her to stay healthy in a bubble right now. But she has made sure that Mark Jockers is here in the room as well. So we get double CWS duty today. And of course, Ms. Ms. Angie, our county administrator is here. She will be departing at the noon hour to go down to the county managers' meetings as part of the annual Association of Oregon Counties meetings and all of the affiliated associations. So Karen Calvert will be covering and at the table through our afternoon meeting through four o'clock. And then Mr. Brad Anderson, our legal counsel, is here. We have a very full agenda today. We'll be doing board and leadership communication this afternoon towards the tail end of the meeting. So what we need to do right now is to just check in on two things. First is the agenda for the board meeting this morning. I want to make sure if you have any final questions before the meeting this morning that we cover those. Does anyone have any questions or further information needs?
Nope.
Okay, Kevin, we're all set up for somebody to read the proclamation?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. Okay, great. You're gonna need to be a little louder, Commissioner Fai. I don't know what you're using as a mic.
Can you hear me now?
A little better, yes.
I will be introducing the proclamation, and yes, we do have somebody to read the proclamation that will be in the room.
Okay. We're moving on to the draft letter in response to the letter we received from the Beaverton City Manager. I wanted to, it's quite unusual for a city manager to send a letter to a Board of Commissioners. It's usually like to like. So I wanted to put together a simple letter to acknowledge the receipt and that we have it, that we appreciate the comments, and continue to work in partnership, moving ahead. And also in this draft, you know, you'll note that I didn't put all the commissioners' signatures in there because I'm trying to keep the response very simple. I did have Ms. Angie read the letter as city managers are part of her peer working group. So yes, she has seen it, and of course, I had Jory take a look at it too. But if you have any wording improvements, I always welcome them.
And just to note, the the letter from the Beaverton City Manager was about MSDIP.
Yep. So is everybody thumbs up on that one?
We're good.
Yes, thank you.
Great. And then we have another one we'll talk about later this afternoon. So without further delay, we will get into our first topic, discuss Washington County's utilization, our local share for the 2019 Metro Parks and Nature Bond Measure Local Share Allocation. See, hi, great, take it away, please.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Harrington, and I will actually kick off today's presentation. Carl, next slide, please. So it's pretty uncommon that I start out a presentation with some county administrator comments. I did want to just preface this presentation because your board has heard this item on a few different occasions previously. In the next slide, Carl will be providing an overview of the policy direction that we have heard to date. I do want to lift up a couple of policy items just of note and for members of the public. As a reminder, based on your board's direction, staff will be applying for an agreement extension to the BOR agreement, which is the Bureau of Reclamation. There is a dictated window of opportunity to apply for that extension per the federal process, and that is in the summer of 2025. Our BOR partners are aware of the county's intent to apply for this extension and are expecting this request at that point in time. They have communicated their support for that decision, and staff expect no barriers. So one of the questions that I had worked through with the team is how do we make sure that, because time passes, that we do apply for this extension? So within our project management approach within facilities and parks, this will be a key deliverable in that project management so that we don't miss applying for that extension. So talking about the extension, we are eligible to apply for a two-year extension, which will mean the agreement will not expire at the end, or excuse me, September 30th, 2025, instead September 30th, 2027. So that means at September 30th, 2027, construction must be completed and all funds, federal and local matching funds, which could include grants, must be fully expended on the qualifying project by the expiration of the grant. So that means that the federal funds, matching funds, construction to the standard of the agreement must be completed by September 30th, 2027. I do want to also lift up, staff have not started to apply for grants or those other local options. That was a question that your board has brought up, what grants are, could we be eligible for? And staff have previously reported out on some of the types of grants. Currently, we are starting the process of a feasibility study, which will go into further depth with an outside independent consultant to really look at not only the capital but also the operations of the campground. That feasibility study is very important so that we go into grants applications with all the most current information and that it's an accurate grant submittal process. So that is the why behind not having applied for grants since the last two board conversations we've had with your board. So I wanted to provide some more of that in-depth update, yes, Chair and Commissioner Treese.
If I might.
You go ahead and then I'll.
You sure? Okay, so you've trained me to think that construction of something can take three years. So in my mind, I went, okay, we have to be done. Construction used to be completed by September 30th, so I pulled it into July 1. Okay, so July 1, 2027, back three years, takes me to July 1, 2024. My question, though, well, are you comfortable with my using three years, just as a general rule for this?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, because I don't like to make stuff up for you. The feasibility study, is that something that you foresee taking another, about how much time, a year?
We are hoping to have the results of the feasibility study mid to early 2020.
Calendar year, okay. Oh, well, that lines up with July 1 of 2024. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate the context. Commissioner Treese?
Thank you, Chair. Clarification, you said that all the all the funds need to be expended by 2027, September 30. So those funds, it's the funds that have been identified to match the federal dollars, not anything in addition, correct? I mean, they can't have purview over it bad.
So per the agreement, we are required to make a one-to-one funding match with the BOR's agreement. We could determine to build a campground to a higher level, and that answer, that question and answer will come from the feasibility study.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that the scope of control, that's what I'm asking you about.
So maybe from a project and a scoping standpoint, could it be plausible that a campground is constructed in phases? Phase one to close out the BOR agreement, and then phase two to the standard that your board desires? That could be an option. I want to underscore, it is not an option until we have that feasibility study complete.
I just want to make sure I understand what the obligation is to the federal government in relationship to matching funds and what control they have over how we spend those dollars.
Commissioner Willie, do you have any questions on this?
No, I'm gonna wait for the presentation, but yeah, that's a good point. And I think once we spend the five million bucks, then we can do whatever we want to, whenever we want to.
Yeah, Commissioner Rogers or Commissioner Fai, do you have any questions thus far? Okay, thank you. All right.
Turn it over to Carl.
Laurel and Carl, welcome.
For the record, my name is Laurel Brown. I'm the Director of Facilities, Fleet and Parks Services. Thank you, Phil. And I am going to immediately, now that my mic is adjusted, turn it over to Carl to deliver the presentation today.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Chair Harrington. So we'll talk a little bit about what we have heard from you over the last couple of meetings. We'll review some materials that have previously been presented to you. And then what we would like to hear from you is your direction on the utilization of the local funds. So what we had heard from the board in August and September was that we are to meet the obligation on the federal assistance grants. That is where the campground and the park office and visitor center. It's to pursue the extension on the agreement with the BOR, which Tonya just explained the process for. It is to pursue external funding sources as match money for the Park Office of Visitors Center. And it's to proceed with the feasibility study, which, as also previously mentioned, will provide us a wealth of information, including design, estimated construction cost numbers. It will verify our operations and maintenance, needs, costs, revenue expectations, and do the, and help us meet the obligations of the funding sources. So if local share money is used as a part of this project, there are requirements that come along with that funding source that we will have to meet. And so the feasibility study will identify those and provide us some options on how we could meet those. Similar to the BOR grants, there are some requirements that we will have to meet that the feasibility study will clarify and give us some direction on. We heard verbally some support for the Toilton River Access Facility at Eagle Landing Park. And we heard from the board that it is your decision to figure out how to allocate the county's local share utilization. At the last meeting, Chair Harrington had proposed to allocate a million dollars to Toilton Hills Park and Recreation District for the Cooper Mountain Nature Park Project. So again, for today, review some of the material that we've covered briefly, cover some of the material that we provided for you in the past, and answer any questions that you might have, and then receive your direction on the local share allocation. So with that, I would, I will review what the county's capital needs are for parks-related projects. That is the campground at, and these are the three projects that we've been talking about for, with you now for a while. This is the campground at Skoggins Valley Park, the Park Office and Visitor Center at Skoggins Valley Park, and the Toilton River Access Facility. So the estimated capital costs are shown in the first column. And then we have identified half of the funding for the two Skoggins Valley Park projects, and that comes in the form of the United States Bureau of Reclamation Grants. The remaining need for those projects is identified there. And again, that's an estimate. If the board decides ultimately that it wants to overmatch and build higher than than are those funds, talk about that's an option for you. We'd have to look for some other potential funding sources. And then the Toilton River Access Facility, that's our estimated cost based on the feasibility study that was produced in 2017. We do not currently have any identified funding for that, and so we would need to to identify that funding source before moving forward with that project.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
The the Bureau of Reclamation Grant that was secured, did that include just the Skoggins Valley Park? Or did that grant back to 2016 or so also include the visitor center?
There are two separate grants agreements, one for each in those amounts.
Okay, so when you say the BOC has direct, in the the single asterisk, the board has directed staff to pursue, is that underway now or was that previously done?
That's what we heard from you in the last couple of meetings, that we were to go pursue another federal funding source as match for that BOR grant.
Okay, yep, so there's two, got it, got it. Now I'm with you. Then the other thing I don't, I need to frame this question up. Well, I was a little puzzled in reading the packet around how to understand the two older documents, the 1989 documents. So what I'm looking for is just some context in terms of what documents from Washington County were included in that BOR grant back in 2016, long before us, to set the expectation that those dollars would go towards a campground and a visitors, a Parks Office Visitor Center.
So I'll take an attempt at answering that question. If I don't get it right, please reframe the question.
I don't know anything about what documents were included on the grant. So anything you tell me will be right, Carl, so.
Sounds good to me. So the the materials that were included with your packet were illustrative. They were an example of how we have, how the county, long before any of us were here, has been considering the development of a campground at Skoggins Valley Park. They were not intended to be thoroughly digested. It was just a representation of the work that has happened over time and space. Those were not, no, no, none of the BOR grant application materials were predicated on that document. The documents that were shared late yesterday with you were completely independent of those documents. And so there is a spreadsheet that describes the thinking into the request, into the federal grant application process.
And all of those documents, because with any grant, you have to provide financial figures of what are you requesting? Those were all staff estimates of what we anticipated, the campground, visitor center costs, and and operations were based on those previous visioning components that the county conducted. The point in time where we are right now is going through the feasibility study using an outside consultant to verify the construction cost and the operating pro forma. So it's it's part of that project management sequence.
So it might understand that that, the 1989 materials were our background for this feasibility.
Thank you, because I read the packet over the weekend, which included those documents. And I didn't have much time late yesterday for an update, and I'm having trouble identifying what changed between the packet that I downloaded Thursday night and read over the weekend and yesterday's update. So if you could highlight that for me along the way, I'd appreciate it. But thank you. Now I can relax a little that we're not required to build out to the 1989 specs.
We are required to build based on the fiscal amount within the BOR agreement.
Yep.
And we are required to build a campground and visitor center. This is not an agreement that we can not comply with. The only possibility is the extension. If we do not comply comply with the agreement, we are subject to being at risk for eligibility for other federal grants. So I know your board is aware. I just want to repeat those points.
So so when we talk about the BOR grant and the September getting, applying for the extension, and hopefully the extension to July 30 of 2027, it applies to both of those projects.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I'm with you. I'm, I have it straight.
89 agreement, this is only gonna cost $61,000. We're gonna make some money on this deal.
I I didn't carry that detail forward, but I carried, I carried others back forward.
That's on page 33.
Been a long weekend as a result, folks. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that clarity.
So a little further information about these projects. Again, the feasibility study will provide a consultant's review of our grant application. It will provide us current construction cost estimates and reasonable expectations for revenue and expenditure for operations and maintenance, as well as, again, help us meet those funding source requirements. So it will provide us a wealth of opportunity. Once we have the design concept, we will bring that back to this board for your consideration. I'm sorry, I skipped ahead a slide, and then I'll flip back.
Okay.
I thought this met that more closely, the previous slides.
Got it.
Sorry, I should have mentioned that. So our intention with these, with the feasibility study, that will specifically focus on the campground in the Eagle Landing Park project is that we will design those to our sort of ultimate objective. Whether or not we can do that full build with existing resources, we will know after the feasibility study. If we can do the full build with the available resources, now we will. Otherwise, we will build to the to the available funding, and then we would look at doing a second phase, if you will, for for the campground project. Depending on when the, there's, you know, demand for it and other resources become available to us, our expectation is that those financial resources would not be related to the general fund. Similarly, our expectation, we just want to confirm with you again that our expectation is to operate the campground and Park Office and Visitor Center is that the operational expenses will be covered by the revenue produced by the sites or otherwise produced by parks and not a new general fund to ask. Questions on that before I move on? Okay, so then back to the Metro Parks and Nature Bond Measure. So this is information that we've provided for you in the past, so I won't spend a great deal of time on this. But I just wanted to remind you that in 2019, Metro passed a regional bond measure for $475 million. Of that $475 million, $92 million was allocated to the local share funding pot. Of that $92 million, about $32 million of that is, will be assigned to Washington County park providers. And that table shown there shows what that distribution will be. It lists all the cities and it lists Toilton Hills Park and Recreation District. And at the bottom there, bolded, is the Washington County's piece of this, which is just just over $3.25 million.
So this was the 2019 Metro Parks and Nature Bond?
Correct.
Which the board in 2026, 2016, had absolutely no vision of happening. So when they applied for the grant, they had no idea how they would match it.
Hey, could I, could I just ask a clarifying question? I I think I know the answer, but the unparked area, it says, is that, does that exclude, like, THPRD and and City Park? I don't understand what that means.
Yeah, that that's some some old terminology that we used early on in our conversation with the board. The gist of that is it is the area in urbanized, unincorporated Washington County that is not served by another park and recreation agency. Okay, so just a quick recap, the total of the local share allocation for Washington County is $3,256,965. The staff recommendation that we presented to you in August and September is to utilize that local share funding as match for the campground for the construction of the Toilton River Access Facility at Eagle Landing Park with a contribution to Toilton Hills Park and Recreation District for the Cooper Mountain Project. At the last meeting or two, we heard a recommendation from Chair Harrington that a million dollars be given of this local share money to Toilton Hills Park and Recreation District. So the quest, so the, so we are here now to answer any questions that you might have and to receive your direction on how to allocate the utilization of this 3.256965 in local share funding.
Thank you, Carl, for your ongoing work on this and Laurel, too, and providing just the great history so that we can be all along the journey. And as Carl underscored, this is really a policy conversation for your board, how you would want to allocate these metro share dollars. And we'll turn it over to you for your discussion.
Well, so staff made a recommendation, as you've heard here. So if you have any questions on that, I'll let staff handle that. I will speak to my recommendation. My recommendation involves reducing the amount that the 2019 local share has through the recommendation here by $850,000 so that it can be combined with the $150,000, right? That means that we have upwards of at least two, if not three fiscal years to come up with the $850,000 somehow. And if that's divided over three fiscal years, that's just over $283,333 per year for three more years. And that's in addition to the work that we've directed our staff to try to seek the local match for the 1.7 million for the Park Office slash Visitor Center. So I want to underscore that when the prior board directed staff to pursue the BOR grant, they had no idea where the local match would come from. And this local, this 2019 Metro Parks and Nature Bond Program was not in the works. Metro Parks and Nature Bond Program was not in the works prior to. The new Metro Council Formation at the beginning of twenty nineteen. So we're fortunate to have the local share dollars to apply. But nothing was presumed at that time. So. I mean, we're, we're no different than what the board would have been in terms of trying to seek. Solutions for meeting the local share grant. Another reason why. I'm making this suggestion is. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars is somewhat. Laughable and embarrassing. To consider, especially with what we know now for the major opportunity that is before us. We all had the opportunity to tour the site that. THPRD and Metro have the opportunity to acquire, to expand the park. It's beautiful property, additional habitat, helps protect the. The stream corridors coming off of Cooper Mountain. And is a. Frankly, one of those once in a lifetime opportunities, which is why THPRD is working so hard to get Metro. To partner with them to acquire the property. And it will take many millions of dollars to purchase the property and. All of that is part of the target area that Metro has had for Cooper Mountain. Going back to their first acquisition in nineteen ninety-five. We also know through information from THPRD that it is a well-used regional park. With visitation from City of Hillsborough, City of Beaverton, City of Tigard and. Residents of urban unincorporated Washington County. Hence of why I think we need to have an appreciable contribution. So. That is the background as to why I've made this proposal. And I think that we have the opportunity to. I'm, I would, I want to make sure that it's well-understood that with my recommendation. I continue to be grateful for the fact that one million, six hundred and seventy. Thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars would still be applied towards that local match obligation, which is something we didn't know. Prior to Metro being successful on the ballot in twenty nineteen May, I believe it. No, November. Can't remember, was it November or May? Doug doesn't remember either. Actually, I have it in my notebook. Doesn't matter. Twenty nineteen. And that we just have to solve the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar. Additional match over the next three years, which I also think is very durable.
So I have a couple of questions.
Yes, please.
If we can go ahead and, and I'm not sure if Diane is still on. Okay. First of all, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page, that you're talking about the eight hundred and fifty million coming out of. The two, two point five zero amount.
Yep, so.
Eight hundred, did I say eight hundred?
You said million, million. I was gonna say wow.
Think what we can do. Pardon me. We have not talked about the Eagle Landing Park. So my question is to Mark and Diane, and that is, has C W S in your history ever supported? This type of facility on the Toaltown River?
They have through letters, but I think you're asking about.
Financially.
Financially.
Not, not for property acquisition. We did partner with Metro on the Farmington Bridge. Had a launch area where Metro came to us and we were part of the design team that. Put that park together as well as we have an agreement with Metro to do restoration on any properties they have on the west side. So often we interact in that way. And then obviously we are supporting, you know, the, the, the green ribbon panel that was located. Looking at a river trail, pieces like that, but we haven't done property acquisition per se for that purpose.
And this is property acquisition.
This project is not land acquisition. This is the development of a. An access facility. So this would be like a floating dock. From existing county property.
Diane, I see your hand up there too. I want to make sure that I acknowledge that.
Thanks, Mark. I, I just wanted to augment what you said. So where clean water services can leverage our sanitary sewer funds. And our stormwater funds is by augmenting a project like this where we can find tree planting, for example. That advances our thermal management strategies or a way to add the team's expertise. To help with some shared outcomes that Washington County may want with their parks. So. We're always really trying to balance the, the use of the ratepayer funds with the objectives of. What clean water services must do for permit compliance, but yet finding ways to, to leverage all of this to create. More community value. So, but we wouldn't necessarily put money into acquisition or programs. Unless there was this tieback to those pieces of the utility.
So my question is, when I look at the master plan for, for the landing with the tree plantings. With all the other pieces that go along with that, is there any opportunity for, and no as a financer. I, but I'm asking, is there any opportunity for Clean Water Services to participate there? And. Part of what I'm looking at here is any, any contribution here can be directed toward. Reducing that eight hundred and fifty million dollar cost back to.
Eight hundred and fifty million dollars, yeah.
Yeah, so the answer is maybe. I think we would need an integrated team to come together to look at. The objectives that the Washington County Parks folks would like to accomplish and then to, to see if we can. Align some of the, the utility objectives for Hag Lake. So there might be. Commissioner trees to, to find a potential way.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'm, I'm sorry to put you on the spot here, but as I looked at the, the information of last night and previously. It came to mind that, well, wait a minute, this is something that is improving the, the recreational piece, but also the, the whole. Atmosphere there with the trees, additional trees and that type of thing. So it seemed like a reasonable question to be asking.
Yes, thank you.
So in addition to looking at the August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three work session material. There's also information in the September first, twenty twenty packet too. Commissioner Willie, Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Phi.
I'll defer to Roy.
Sure, I'm, hopefully you can hear my voice a little nasally. Well, I, I can't profess that I wasn't there when we did the B O R grant and back when we did. And you're correct in the assumptions that we weren't exactly certain where the match was going to come from. So there's nothing new about that. That's. That, that's understood. I'm understanding that we need to honor obligations. I, I don't have any question about that. In regard to the Eagle Landing, it would be a mistake not to do that project. We've been, it's been Cherry District, my district, back and forth. It was a scout project at one time. It's one of the great access points on the Toaltown River for those who recreate. And so I, I, that's a modest investment. As far as the Toaltown Hills Project on Cooper Mountain, I made it very clear at the last time that I, I'm in support of doing something there. It, it's a huge urban park area that has. A magnitude of benefits for the urban areas. And I think the chair was pointing out some of the cities, but there's a lot of other folks who've come further away. Just there that would, would enjoy that. So that, that leaves us with some short cash. We have, I mean, we have some lottery funds. I don't know how we're going to dedicate that exactly. Let's go back to our concerns about the hotel motel tax, recreations, what that's about. And promotion of the Washington County area. Is there some opportunity there? And is there savings that could be picked up elsewhere? So if I were king for the day, I would, I would certainly echo the support for the Skoggas Valley Park in its full. And try to find how we'd fund that over some period of time. I would not adjust Eagles Landing one dollar. And I would find a million bucks for the Toaltown Hills Park and go back and look at our limited financing. I, I don't know about Clean Water Services, really isn't within their repertoire. I mean, they're not in the park business, but. I think we have other sources that we can look at and I would certainly encourage us to do so. So that's my thoughts.
Well, today get to be king for a day. That's why we're giving our direction. Commissioner Phi and Commissioner Willie.
Go ahead, Nafisa.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Willie. Can you all hear me?
Yep.
Great, wonderful. Great presentation, staff, Carl, Tanya and everyone. I'm in support of the staff recommendation of allocating a hundred and fifty thousand of the local share funds. To THPRD Cooper Mountain Project. I also want to, I don't know if I could direct as a one commissioner, but I would like to really ask and recommend. Our staff work with THPRD leadership to assist with the development of a comprehensive strategy for long-term funding. Sustainability and impact. I'd like us to work together to identify what the total funding is for this project. And to also figure out how we can meaningfully support. It is essential that we invest in Cooper Mountain to not only address immediate needs. But to also contribute to the lasting improvement of our community. And somebody that lives five minutes from Cooper Mountain. I can attest to you, we utilize, we utilize. So this isn't about. About me or my kids or who utilize. This is about long-term planning and how do we meet all these demands? And all these obligations that we, and all these commitments that we've made. I also. Think that it's really important to center what we've heard in terms of meeting our obligation on the federal assistance grant. So those are my comments and I'm in this to identify how we get and how I can help. Commissioner Rogers be a king for the day to figure out how we all identify.
Okay, it's my turn. Okay, so I'm looking at slide five. And. We've got in the first column estimated capital costs. How old are those numbers?
Those are the numbers that are in the. Bureau of Reclamation Grant Documents. So recent, twenty twenty.
Well, yeah, you can add what? Thirty or forty percent of that to be, make them twenty-three dollars or twenty-four dollars.
But your point and the, the question that Carl is answering is, as Ms. Engie stated, we're only on the hook. To, to build to five million dollars worth of investment. We can do more than that if we get the funding for it. But that is what we're on the hook for.
Commissioner Willie, to your point, inflation costs, your boardsman discussing inflationary costs on our capital significantly over the last year. And so that is the intentional point of the asterix that these are just the estimated staff cap, capital costs. And that will be refined through that feasibility process so that. There, there will be options for the board to consider at that point in time.
I'm just trying to figure out. What, what the number is for all the projects, okay? So. Because this is our. Dream wish, I guess, thus for, for this project. So we have the campground, we have the park office, we have the Toaltown River Access Point. We have a million dollars for THPRD as the ask, okay? So we're talking about just on the first column numbers, we're talking about ten million dollars. Not eight point nine million dollars, okay? So we take the ten million dollars and we say, well, we've got four point two of identified funding. So, okay. What's the feasibility a study gonna cost us?
I'm, I'm gonna estimate about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, which is not included in this.
Correct.
Okay? And that comes out of somebody's pocket, okay? Is, can we include that cost in our match money for the feds?
We may be able to.
I, I see a nod over here. I like that answer better than maybe. Okay. So anyway, you can see where I'm, where I'm kind of grinding down. If we start with ten and we got four, that means we got six left over that we are in shortfall. Quite frankly, I would believe that the Toaltown River Access Point's going to be well above five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, but let's just, let's just go with. The current numbers that we have. We still have a pretty significant shortfall in there. And I think that's what we have to be looking at when we make this decision. So the next, the next question is. What is the timing of this decision? If we've got the study already ordered. Why can't we hit the pause, pause button on this until we see what the study tells us what the cost is before we make a decision on how to allocate? The three point two million dollars of Metro money.
That's the board's decision.
Okay, well, that would be, that would probably be me, my suggestion. And then one other thing is. I'd like to know a little bit more about the Cooper Mountain Project because it does sound really, really cool. I just, I, I heard the chair say. There's millions of dollars left that we have to raise to get to it. So I'd kind of like to know what that gap is. But also, and then to Roy's point, I think Roy brought up T L T. I'd like to find out if there is. If we can use any T L T funding. For this project or if we would have to. I noticed that you said there'll be no general fund ask for the operations of this. I would like to think that would be true. But I wouldn't bet on it. So I wanted to look at some other funding source opportunities, just in case. In twenty-seven, we decide, we find out that we have another wingspan opportunity.
Could I ask you a question? Chair, you come. I, I think what I'm understanding you to say regarding, regarding these numbers here, that. It, it's in conflict to what I heard Tanya and Carl say is that we, we would build to what available. Resources we have versus adding an inflationary. Clause.
Well, okay, I, I just use these numbers. Pam, I, it says eight point nine is the total down at the bottom. So I just stuck with that number. So I rounded it to nine million dollars.
Well, I thought you rounded it up to ten. He added the eight fifty.
Well, actually I added the million dollars because.
No, you can't because it's.
No, the one fifty's in the allocation of the three point two. It's not in the.
Eight fifty plus one fifty equals one million. So it only increases by eight fifty.
Okay, we can, we can.
Okay, so, so my, my question is, then answered, you did not, you did not inflate, you did not. Adjust for inflation. Okay, thank you. That's, that was what my question.
No, which we will have to, but bottom line is, there's just, to me, there's a lot of variables. And I'm not ready to make this decision until I see what that feasibility study has to say. And I'd like to hear more about the Cooper Mountain Project, how much money T R H P, THPRD is going to need to raise to get that across the finish line. And. And this, I, I kind of put this, shared a little bit like we looked at ARPA money, you know, we said we have obligations. And we have to take care of those obligations before we give the money away. And that's kind of where I am on this. And the last question would be for you is, is there some magic to a million dollars? Could we be talking five hundred?
Because a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is embarrassing.
Is there some variable?
A million dollars is.
How about if a half a million, can we negotiate?
No, it's, when you go for a sizable property acquisition. Which we've all had the opportunity for over three months to learn about.
That's on me.
Yes, it is. A, a one million dollars is. Yes, it is. A, a one million dollars is.
That I could have a conversation with soon here.
The, the least amount that you would provide for a contribution towards a significant property acquisition. So, yeah, I, I can relate to, you know, it is very uncomfortable that we have no written documentation of the board, pre, prior board acknowledging a liability, just like we haven't had a capital improvement plan. And we are doing good and responsible work, which is why we asked, we directed our staff to seek the extension because we know construction by September thirtieth of twenty twenty-five is not doable. So, yeah, I think we have paths we can pursue to come up with the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars that will be needed for the local match. The local share is per our direction. The Parks and Nature Oversight Committee watches how long it's taken for the local jurisdictions to put the local share into action. We are a little bit late to the program for that, given that we're at the doorstep of twenty twenty-four. So I think we're, we're getting to our local share work in a timely fashion. So I'm not actually trying to debate you, but rather provide the context towards the, the timing and the one million dollars.
Do we have time for another comment?
Oh, I haven't been watching the time.
I'm, I just want to be able to, I haven't said what my position is on this. And I am very supportive of a million dollars going to T H P R D. I'm, I would like to be creative in how we get to that million dollars. I appreciate Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Willie's conversation around T L T, around different opportunities. And I also appreciate Clean Water Services looking into whether or not that fits into their, their planning process in, into the future. So I'm, I'm in support. I feel that Cooper Mountain is a, is a once-in-a-lifetime, we've used that term here before, but once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. It's Oaks Savannah. It's gorgeous. I've spent time there, and I know, I know all of you have. But I think that if we don't, if we don't support this, this acquisition, we will, we will not be looking to the future for generations.
I don't disagree necessarily. I'm just saying eyes wide open.
I agree.
Because according to my numbers, we're going to be two point six million short, so.
That's why we directed our staff to find an additional source for the one point seven local match. Yep, so at this juncture, T H P R D is looking for commitment from us. As you've seen in the letter and we've had the opportunity through the presentations, I'm assuming that they're working with the property owner and will have to secure a sales agreement long before we have to have our construction done. So I would, my recommendation is that we move forward with the one million dollar grant. And I've heard that Commissioner Rogers is in support of that. I'm in support of that, and Commissioner Treese is in support of that. And that we'll work together to figure out how to solve the remainder of the funding needs. That's what I'm hearing.
Well, I don't want my message of a no to be that I'm against the Cooper Mountain thing. I'm just saying way too many questions on this page, and my numbers say we're two point six million dollars short. So I'm not ready to make that decision right now.
I, I understand. I'm just saying we have a board majority to move forward at this juncture.
Knock yourself out.
But I appreciate Commissioner Willie, yours, ongoing efforts to, to close that gap.
See, I got a big food sale coming up this weekend.
Do you have what you need?
Can I just repeat the direction to ensure that I have and staff have clarity? What we're focused right on today is the metro allocation. So of the metro allocation, one million going to T H P R D. Eagle Landing at five hundred and eighty-seven, and then the remaining dollars between the campground and visitor center. As is shown on the slide in front of you, we are pursuing the F L A P grant. And we are moving forward with the feasibility study, which upon completion of the feasibility study, we will bring those, that back to your board, which will address the campground, park, and visitor center. At that point in time, we will be better informed to be applying for grants, and we will continue to pursue other funding options as we move forward.
Sounds good.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. And thank you to our T H P R D partners for being in the room. You have at least one homework assignment with Commissioner Willie. Thank you.
Bring your ten key. You're gonna go over the numbers here.
Okay, oh, that's right. We have a board meeting at ten. Silly me. Okay, we'll see you at the board meeting. Thank you. And we'll reconvene in work session at one o'clock.
I like your, but I really appreciate how creative you're being with the dollars and, and different ways.